Good evening. Welcome to the Livonia Public Schools Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Board of Education of February 1st, 2016. We welcome those of you who are in attendance this evening. We have a rather large crowd which we've been having lately and that's always a joy to the Board of Education to have so many folks who are interested in what's going on with the Board. I know a good number of our employees of the district and we each try to get kind of into each other's turf a bit. We try to get into buildings, into activities, to see more firsthand of what's going on in the schools and it's a joy to see folks who work in the schools on a day-to-day basis to attend Board meetings also. I firmly believe that we work together best as a team when we really understand each other's roles and functions and so forth. So, I thank those of you who came out this evening to spend a little bit of time with us. I'd also like to thank those of you who are joining us from home. I don't blame you, even for a mild February, it's still a little chilly. If you are here at the meeting, if you'd like an agenda, they are outside the door, just on the table. If you're following us from home and you'd like to follow along with an agenda, you can find it on our website. That will be found at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the School Board tab, you can drop right down to Agendas and follow along with us this evening. We are going to have a brief, or a minor change in our agenda this evening. The under Item 3A Quarterly Report for the Bond from Plant Moran Cressa will be postponed to another evening and we will be adding a discussion about the Environmental Consultant for Stevenson High School. So, if you're interested in either of those two topics, be aware that we have those changes to our agenda. The first item on our agenda this evening is Audience Communications. This is a time that the Board of Education sets a time to hear from members of our community. It is by design, it's not a question-and-answer session, so we will be hearing from members of our community. It's important to note too, what the role of the Board of Education is. And someone was asking us recently, I believe it was Mr. Senators who brought it up, to delineate what our role is because some folks know intimately what's going on with the Board and some don't know what our roles and responsibilities are. The Board of Education has three responsibilities and the first is to set policies for the district. The second is to set the long-term goals, the strategic plans, and align the budget to those items. And the third is to hire and oversee our superintendent. Those three items fall under the responsibility of this Board of Education. And therefore, if the topics are pertaining to those items, you'll see responses from the Board of Education, usually a letter back on those items. If your questions or your concerns are more of a day-to-day operations nature, you'll likely see a response coming back from our superintendent, Mrs. Andrea Oakwist, or a member of administration who can best address your issues. So, that's kind of a little bit of background as far as what kind of response you can expect and from whom and why. We do have a three-minute time limit on our audience communications per person and that is so that it can be fair to everybody across the board. So, if you would try to keep that in mind, it would be appreciated. If you hear a little bell go off, you'll know you'll hit your three minutes and that's a little bit more polite than my having to interrupt anybody. So, we ask that everyone do honor that three-minute time limit. The first member of the audience who would like to participate in audience communication is Victoria Estes. Victoria?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the Board, Superintendent Oakwist. My name is Victoria Estes. I grew up in Livonia and I'm a graduate of Churchill High School. I was very excited upon completion of my bachelor's degree in education to begin as a substitute teacher in Livonia while hoping to find a job opening in the very district that fostered my love for learning and desire to become a teacher. I was fortunate enough to be hired as a contract teacher in 2008, teaching fifth grade at Riley. I worked hard and learned a lot about teaching through the outstanding staff I worked with and experience I gained that year. I knew I had made the right decision to teach and help students reach their full potentials. Since that time, I've invested $20,000 in graduate school and worked hard to improve my skills as a teacher. I was hired on Step A of the salary schedule and assumed that with my increased skills and experience, my salary would also increase. This has been very disappointing for me as I am currently on Step Two and a Half with a master's degree and almost eight years of teaching experience. The pay freezes and increase in insurance costs have taken a toll on my family's finances. I'm a saver and always have been. But unfortunately, with my take-home pay only increasing $172 per paycheck from 2010 until the present and my student loan payment increasing $210 per month along with my other bills, my debt continues to grow. I would love to start saving for my children's future and it's been a discussion for a long time now, but I just don't have the money to do so or extra money to go visit my sister that has moved to Colorado, but it's just not in our family's financial situation right now. I work to pay for daycare costs and insurance. I opt for the 21 pays so I can afford to pay to some of my kids to daycare throughout the school year. At least once a month, I cry when I balance my checkbook because there's no extra money to save for my family's future. I know other teachers that are in the same situation I am. Sorry. I know the current financial situation is not good for the district or for the teachers, but I feel that the future sounds even worse. I worry about whether I will be able to afford to stay in the career that I love with other exemplary teachers that I work with going to quit too because they can't afford to pay their bills. I have invested a lot in myself and in my classroom and I don't feel like the district is making an investment to retain excellent teachers that it has or to attract other young teachers that hope to learn, to earn a living in a career that they love. I'm happy to work in a district and a community that's provided me with so many amazing learning experiences, however, I don't know that I'll be able to continue doing what I love if I can't be making a professional wage. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ashley Witherspoon.
Good evening, Superintendent Oakwist, President Burton, and members of the Board. My name is Ashley Witherspoon and I currently teach sixth grade at Riley Upper Elementary. I'm here this evening to talk about teacher investment. Though many of my colleagues have spoken in previous weeks, I feel it's important for teachers to continue to share their personal stories. I've wanted to be a teacher since I was five. I know all teachers have similar stories about teaching a roomful of stuffed animals and mine is no different. If only I knew then that those students would be some of my easiest to work with. Though there are days when my job can be quite challenging, I simply can't imagine any other job to be as rewarding. Like most new teachers, I still have a passion for what I do. I involve myself heavily in both school and district committees. I currently am invested in the Common Core State Standards Committee for Grade Six and piloting the Sixth Grade Literacy Standards Report Card. But I worry, if I can't continue this work next year, who will be willing to step up? Would there be anybody willing to do this additional work? You see, I mention next year because my husband and I have had to have some serious conversations this year about how long we can continue to go on without a wage increase. And without a wage increase, I most likely will have to take a personal leave next year. Almost my entire monthly wage goes to our daycare payment for my two beautiful children and add to that the student loan payment I must make for earning my master's degree in education. The wage increase I receive from the district for earning my master's degree doesn't even cover my student loan payment. Nothing breaks my heart more than knowing that I might not be able to continue my work next year, but ultimately, I have to choose what is best for my family and I'm afraid that I can't justify any longer working to simply pay my daycare bill when I could be home with my own children. And that is why I'm here today. Though this is my personal story, I know there are other teachers in the district who are in similar financial situations. If teachers who love what they do and are still passionate about their work are left with no choice but to leave our profession in order to support their families, where is that going to leave our district? Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Priscilla David.
President Burton, members of the School Board, Superintendent Oakwist, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I come to you six months into my new position as President of our Teachers' Union. I come as an elementary teacher in your district and a Livonia resident. Both my sons attended Livonia schools. I am actually a resident of the Livonia neighborhood in which I taught for 17 years. These factors have all provided me a unique perspective of our students, our staff, and our buildings. My role in the Livonia Education Association offers me the opportunity to work with new teachers, both in an informational and mentoring role. I encourage them to develop their professionalism while offering them advice and guidance as they wade through the logistics of everyday life in our schools. Their enthusiasm and energy is always refreshing. Their optimism is endless. And yet, as I look at them, I know they are not experiencing the same sense of commitment from LPS that I experienced when I moved here from Detroit Public Schools. Without question, these young people immediately invest in our schools as they set up their rooms in August, purchasing material to build a welcoming environment for students they have not even yet met. When science supplies are depleted or unavailable, they purchase them without question, so their students will benefit from best practice, hands-on learning. They learn quickly. If you want students to read, you must keep them supplied with books that pique their interest and curiosity. All these things and more, they do without question again and again as they teach in Livonia schools. Now, we all know that our state legislature has tied our hands greatly reducing the funds needed to maintain our schools in the manner to which we were accustomed. It is at times like these that allegiances can be forged to create new and stronger programs, that paradigms can shift to convey trust and shared responsibility for the success of our mission. So, I'm here tonight to ask you two questions. First, are you willing to reach out with trust and confidence to work with administrators as well as staff members of this district to explore creative solutions to our growing operating concerns? And just as importantly, I am here tonight to ask you, our Livonia School Board, what you are willing to invest in our teachers as they gain expertise in preparing more meaningful learning experiences for Livonia students, as their responses to students' needs and problems gain maturity and finesse, as they take on more building and district leadership responsibilities? What plans have you discussed in your committee sessions to submit, to cement a continuing relationship between these teachers and Livonia Public Schools? And as the President of their union, what can I tell them? Thank you.
Our last speaker this evening is Kelly Eddy.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Oakwist. My name is Kelly Eddy. I've been teaching at Churchill High School for 19 years. I'm not a person who likes the spotlight. In fact, I'm pretty uncomfortable talking about myself, but tonight, I want to take a moment to do just that. I want you to understand how important it is for the district to support our young teachers. My story is the only way that I know how to do that. So, for those of you that don't know me, I'm a good teacher. Some might even say an excellent teacher. I love what I do and I love the kids I teach. I am always striving to be better and to make the students achieve more. I'm constantly looking for opportunities for my students. Just this year, a group of my students had the chance to work with the Shoah Foundation. The foundation started by Steven Spielberg to promote Holocaust studies. These students so impressed the foundation, they were invited to the Shoah Foundation Gala, they got to meet Steven Spielberg, Bill Ford, and a few other celebrities, as well as take part in a documentary that will be used to promote the Shoah Foundation and to educate teachers on how to use its resources. I have attended numerous summer institutes through the Gilder-Lehman Institute and the National Endowment for the Humanities. I won a prestigious James Madison Fellowship which awarded me $25,000 to pursue a master's degree in American history and government. All of this has made me a much stronger teacher. In 2011, I was awarded the LPS Teacher of the Year Award and in 2012, I was named State History Teacher of the Year by the Gilder-Lehman Institute for American History. All of this was possible because as a young teacher, I knew I could count on being paid for my experience. I never took a second job and because of this, I was able to attend conferences and take classes that helped me become the kind of teacher that could win awards and accolades. My success is due in a large part to the philosophic and financial support I received from LPS. I'm here tonight because our young teachers do not have that support. Our young teachers don't even have the ability to consider this a career because they cannot move up the pay scale or get paid for their experience. What minor advancements there have been in the pay steps have been eaten away by insurance costs and pension costs. I would not have become the teacher I am if I were forced to work a second job to make ends meet or if my experience didn't matter when it came to compensation. I wouldn't have gone to conferences, I wouldn't have gotten a second master's degree, I wouldn't have spent time creating creative, engaging lesson plans because I wouldn't have had time. Our young teachers are the best, but how can we expect them to excel when they have to leave school to go to another job or spend their entire summer working to pay the bills? Do we want excellence in LPS or adequacy? My former students are veterinarians, doctors, nurses, engineers, even school board members, and they are teachers, but sadly, I would never encourage someone to become a teacher today and that breaks my heart. Livonia needs to make some difficult choices. If we want to retain teachers, if we want our teachers to be more than adequate, if we want excellence, we must find a way to give our teachers a path to advance in their career. This is not happening at the moment and if we can't find a way, it's our students that will pay the price. Thank you.
Our next item on our agenda this evening is a Committee of the Whole. I don't have a specific item for this, Mrs. Oakwist. I don't believe you do either.
We do now.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Item 3 Building in Sight and I'll turn this portion of our meeting over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. We have a number of items on our agenda tonight. Ms. Abbey will be handling most of those. As you indicated, we have two changes under Building in Sight and that is the elimination of Item A and insertion of an additional item under Environmental Consultants for Stevenson High School. So, our first item is to be bid results for Stevenson High School abatement. Ms. Abbey?
Thank you very much. Again, we had an opportunity to have some discussions in November and December and earlier in January relative to the fact that it's bid season again. As you know, we're getting prepared for our Phase Three Summer 2016 projects. We've already brought several bids to the Board of Education for approval for environmental consultants and for abatement and for construction on the elementary schools. Tonight, we're bringing several more. Bid results for this summer's work, the first thing we'll be looking at is the abatement for Stevenson High School. Then, we have two rebids for the upper eleme-- or, excuse me, the bids for the upper elementary and middle school projects, some rebids, two projects on the elementary school. And then, again, as Mr. Johnson said, the item that we're adding is the environmental consultant for Stevenson. You'll actually see the environmental consultant's recommendation in our first bid this evening for the environmental work at Stevenson High School. So, we have with us, of course, this evening, next to me, Scott Smith from Plant Moran Cressa and Paul Terrio from Plant Moran. And I see that we have delivered another binder. I don't know what you guys' bookshelves look like at home, but mine are getting a little overcrowded in my office, but they really do help us keep these consistent and easy to follow as we bring each of these forward. And of course, then, as we go through each one of these, assuming the Board wants to move forward and feels comfortable moving forward, we'll ask that they be put on our agenda for voting at the next voting meeting, next Monday night, the eighth. So, with that, I will let Paul or Scott, who's leading tonight?
Well, I'll lead. You want to do the environmental consultant?
No, we'll just go in the order that you have. So, we'll start with the abatement and end with the consultant.
Perfect. Thank you. So, in front of you, you have a binder with Sections A through D. Section A is for the abatement project at Stevenson this summer and next. If you flip to A1, you'll see an award recommendation letter from us, in the amount of $240,248. That is the abatement contract plus the contingency amounts, 20%, similar to what we've done in the past. Those projects were bid out December and January and we took a little bit of extra time just to make sure we had everybody vetted out. We wanted to make sure we knew who was going to be doing the abatement work at the elementary schools and the middle schools so we could make sure they could staff the jobs appropriately. And so, we're bringing it this evening. If you look at Section A2, you'll see our budget for Stevenson was about $225,000 and the hard bids came in just over $200,000. And then, with 20% for contingency, we're at the $240,248 number. So, about $30,000 under budget on that project, which is one of the last major abatement projects that we'll have to bring forward. So, there'll be some smaller ones next year and then Churchill will probably be a little bit larger, but the rest of them are smaller, so. A3 is a recommendation letter from ARC Environmental Group, recommending Global Green Services Group. They, I don't believe, have done any work with us on the bond projects.
I don't. I do not think so, or other projects.
No, but I have worked with them before and I know they do good work, so. And it is a two-phase project, so it's really only about $100,000 worth of work each summer, so.
So, if we're unhappy, Paul, we can always step away from the contract, correct?
Absolutely. Yeah, all contracts always have a termination for convenience clause if we're not happy, so. And then, Section A4 is a bid tabulation. You'll see we got bids from four different firms, which is, I'd say, pretty average for projects of this size, so. And that is pretty much it for the abatement contract.
So, again, this is just typical environmental part of the process and as always, we're looking for someone we're confident can get the work done timely so that we can phase the summer construction appropriately and that is our responsibility to make sure that that's going to happen.
Yep. To that point, we may actually start doing some work over spring break, this upcoming spring break, so, just to get ahead of that.
Okay. So, we'd like to add this to-- answer any questions, of course, and then add this to the agenda if we can.
Okay.
Questions, President Burton?
Yes. You said the termination for convenience clause. This is beyond just our one-year agreement, then I assume, because a lot of these folks have been doing on a one-year basis and then we do a change order to extend to a second year if we are happy with the work and we choose to continue on. Can you tell me a little more about the termination for convenience?
So, two issues. One is the consultants are a year-to-year basis, so that would be the professional that will hire on the fourth item today, so that would be the ARC Environmental Consultant. So, they have a one-year-to-year contract. This is a contract for the full amount, the $200,000, which is over two years, but what Paul is saying is that if, for whatever reason, we're unhappy, they're not fulfilling their duties, they're not doing the work as prescribed, we have an opportunity to cancel that contract for convenience.
Okay.
We do not foresee that happening.
No, oh, no, we don't. It's just, once in a while, we like to reassure you of some of the safeties we've built into the contracts of our contractor vendors. So, this is the construction firm or vendor that will actually be doing the abatement work in the school versus the environmental consultant who will oversee that process.
Okay. So, would this be consistent with termination for cause as you see in other types of contracts or is it the convenience word that piques my interest, is something different from what I've seen before?
Yep. Most of the contracts that we've helped write with your legal counsel, whether it's architectural or construction, typically, we would have a termination for convenience clause. If for any reason, the owner decides to stop the project, halt the project, delay it, change it, or they're just not happy, they can terminate. I think it's on seven days' rate of notice for convenience or something to that effect, so. We haven't had to use that yet, really.
Okay. We hope we don't. All righty. Thank you.
Ms. McDowell?
Thank you, President Johnson. The bid tabulation, being that this is the first time for us to review this, but on Global Green Services Group on the spray-on fireproofing, and it says $22.50 per square foot, and some of the other folks are a lot less money and one's just a little bit less, but how many square feet is that?
Yeah, these projects were bid out, this project was bid out a little bit differently than we had done the abatement work in the past. For whatever reason, we decided to try to bid it out on a square foot basis, so we had square foot unit costs for floor tile, for mastic, for pipe wrap, for other types of abatement work. And then, we basically had the environmental consultant put together square footage quantities based on their takeoff of walking the building and measuring different spaces. So, it's essentially a unit cost project and then we've done the math for them essentially to figure out what that amount comes to. So, to be honest, it's a little bit different than we've done before. I'm not sure that I like it better than the other way, but we tried something new a little bit just to see if we can get that cost down a little bit more and make it a little bit better overall process at the end. Because a lot of times, we'll come back and it'll be, well, we didn't do this room and we did do this room and there's a lot of adds and takes and back and forth at the end to try to come up with the final amount. So, we're trying this to see if we can mitigate some of that.
No. Did they give us a total price and that's where we got the?
Yeah. Last time, we had the environmental consultant actually went through and did the math for us and gave us a little spreadsheet that kind of showed how they came to that number. I'm not sure that we got that this time. I'd have to check.
And I think too, you know, they, everybody has different unit prices and part of their arch's review process was to see, you know, what are the biggest components of the abatement work and most likely, it has very little to do with spray-on fireproofing. It has more to do with floor tile and those sort of things. So, when they, when they look at all the different unit prices, you know, the company that has the lower unit price for the larger scopes of work probably was influenced much more heavily. And you'll see, like, by far, the biggest component of these year-to-year is the floor tile work and while those prices are competitive, you know, Global Green is certainly right towards the bottom of those as well. And that bodes well if there is additional work that's determined.
To that point, though, I think we should ask ARC Environmental to go through and do the math on all four of these and kind of rank them where the total cost would be and we'll provide that backup.
Yeah, because we can't tell anything based on these numbers, so.
Sure.
And I know this is probably an unknown, but how much abatement work is left at Stevenson? Do we know?
$200,000. No. Not.
Just over the years, every year, every time there's a project. So, when we redid Stevenson, how many years ago, there was abatement done there.
In the classroom wings, there's not as much, but if you take areas like the art room, where the addition ties in, the old shop rooms, they have some underlayment underneath the old wooden floors that's underneath the carpet that's hot, that has to be abated. Some of the pipe fittings down in the tunnel that have to be abated. So, there is some work, not as much as you would probably expect with a building of that size because those are, you know, that building's probably almost three times bigger than a middle school would be. Yet, the cost isn't three times as much, so a lot of it has been done, but there are still quite a bit of hot materials in that building, so.
Okay. All right. But yeah, if you can give us totals, that would probably be helpful.
That'd be good, I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Jarvis?
Thank you. Gentlemen, please tell me, what is a trans air plenum? Because Global Green did not bid on that and the other companies did.
Yeah, transite air plenum is essentially a fiber board, a piece of ductwork that has asbestos fibers in the board, essentially. Usually, it's a jacket around a piece of ductwork, so it's not the actual ductwork. There's no air blowing onto the asbestos, but it's the wrap that goes around it to insulate it. I don't know how much of that we actually have on the project. There is one unit down in the tunnel that we had talked about that, but I'm not sure we're going to be disturbing it, so I'm not sure that we're actually abating it, to be honest.
Thank you.
Other questions, Mrs. Jarvis, or?
No, thank you.
I do have one more question.
Ms. McDowell?
Thank you, President Johnson. I'm going back.
We're digressing.
Yeah, we are. Anyway, when you give us the bid totals, can you break it down?
Sure. Absolutely.
For each item?
Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing now, we should put this on regular?
Yes, please.
And then, we'll look at the 3C bid results for construction, upper elementary and middle school.
We do. We have the bids this evening for our last upper elementary and our last middle school. Those two projects will be completed at the end of this summer. That's Holmes and Johnson and we're very excited to get into those schools this summer. We are going to talk about the bid results. I'm going to let Paul and Scott go through those in a second, but one of the things that you're going to see is that we are, as we were on our elementary school bids, we are over budget, about 1.1, might be $1.2 million when it all shakes out. Again, really not, this is not about scope creep, this really is about pressure in the economic environment right now in construction across the country, but very much in southeast Michigan as well. I know anyone reading the paper and keeping up is well aware of what's going on in our community in downtown Detroit and as well as new construction wherever anybody can find a piece of land to build something on. So, we are still feeling that pressure. We had talked about being over budget with our elementary schools and the fact that we do have owner contingency, meaning money that we have put away in the bond funds to account for that. So, these are part of the overall bond, we might say-- So, these are part of the overall bond, we might say this particular project is over budget, but the bond project is not over budget, and there is sufficient funds to do the work that we have prescribed. So, I just want to make sure as we start this conversation and talk about and look at that number that we all remember that while we are talking about a large sum of money, there is sufficient resources within our overall bond project to complete all the projects. So with that, whoever wants to get started on Holmes and Johnson.
Thank you, Ms. Abbey. So the Johnson and Holmes work is covered under tab B in your binders. The first part, you know, in January, we took bids from several companies, nearly 50. We come today before you with a recommendation of about 12.375 million, all-in, that's the hard costs, the construction contingency, and the fees and general condition costs from the construction manager, Barton Mallow. The number is very, very reminiscent of what was last year. We were about 10.8 in hard costs, which is tab B, which is about what we were last year for Emerson and Riley. So we're consistent there. Again, similar to the elementary schools, we reduced contingency down to 8% this year from 10% last year, just based on past findings. So, right now, we're, we're showing about a million 30 over budget at the bottom there, factoring in the contingencies. There was one category that we did not open, that was our steel bids. It's really a very small and immaterial category to the overall scope, but we're figuring a $50,000 to $100,000 budget for that, and those will be going out for rebid. I think they're out currently, and we'll bring those back for consideration a little bit later. So with that in mind, you know, we're projecting, you know, about 1.2, 1.1 to 1.2 overall for Johnson and Holmes. Flipping to tab, part three of tab B, we have individual letters for Johnson, as well as individual letters for Holmes. Actually, during the work scopes, everything went very well. We only had one contractor that, they had found an error, that was the flooring contractor, Shock Brothers. They asked to withdraw their bid due to computational error, but everything else held up well. We found some good savings in terms of some combined bids where contractors put together a very competitive bid if they were awarded both projects. Mechanical being one, I think we saved nearly $300,000 just by awarding to them. And they're a large company, they handled all five schools last year, so they can certainly handle the two for this summer. So good savings there. Tab four really is more of an overall summary, factoring in some of the construction costs and contingency dollars. And tab five is a little bit more detail, showing all the different bidders and their individual tabs for projects.
So that's by trade, right?
That's by bid category, which is essentially by trade. As I mentioned, the steel would be the only one that would not be included, and at this time, being where we are with the budget, we did not recommend any alternates, although there are a couple we are still thinking about, and there are some work that we may consider as a sinking fund project down the road as well, once we get a little bit more information and get the right solution in place. Are there any questions related to the bids for Johnson and Holmes?
Scott, in terms of the contractors for these projects, were these similar contractors, or do we use some of these same people in the past?
Yep.
And our experience has been pretty good with them?
Yeah, in fact, a lot of these guys are, there are some new faces from last year, but some, as an example, Advanced Building Group, Hewitt Glass, Southeastern Tile, Commercial Contracting Corp., Cones, Sig Jan.
Great Lakes Chemical.
Great Lakes Chemical.
Point of view repeats.
I think J&amp;J has done some more kind of thing?
Yep, J&amp;J was on the elementary schools, a couple of the elementary schools from last summer. You start to see a pool of bidders that, you know, the educational K-12 market is where they like to specialize and focus their attention. A good example is the visual display boards. Sig Jan is the one that got this. There's a couple of major players in that industry, and when one gets the work, the other one sharpens their pencil usually next time, and so Claridge was the other big one, and they happened to get all the elementary schools. So now, Sig Jan sharpens their pencil, and they're, they're the little bidder here. So, a lot of good companies, a lot of people that are capable of doing the work. There are a couple of new ones, but there's no real, in this list here, there's no concerns.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, so we can put this on as well, regular agenda.
Yep, if I could, I would like to thank Ms. Stephanie Hedges here as well from Barton Mallow, who did a lot of the grunt work getting this thing put together, sitting down and interviewing all these firms over the course of the last couple of weeks, you know, putting everything out for bid, and walking contractors through the buildings, and all the paperwork that it takes to get these things bid out. So I would like to thank Barton Mallow and Stephanie for all their efforts on this as well.
Actually, that's the easy part of your job, the hard part's the summer. When they're out at the schools in the heat.
That's for sure.
That's for sure.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes, Mrs. Johnson.
Paul, if we have any questions on any of these? Can we just, if you can email or send it to Ms. Abbey, and she can send it on to you, or?
Yeah, that would be great.
Sure.
In, excuse me, Mr. Johnson. In light of having everyone have the same information, may I suggest that you send it, at least copy all board members on it?
Sure.
So we all know what, what information is, is out there?
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then we'll move us on to item 3D, bid results for construction rebids on other school projects.
As we mentioned when we brought the elementary school projects a couple of weeks ago, there were three items that we didn't feel we had enough coverage on, and we wanted to, not enough vendors responded, and we wanted to rebid those. We are bringing two of those to you this evening. The third one is painting at Randolph, and we are still working on a solution to that. You may recall that Paul and Scott had talked about some challenges in getting that building ready to be painted. It's going to need a little bit different prep work in that school that we've seen at some of our other schools. So, we'll be bringing the painting for Randolph to you at another, at another time. But we are bringing these two bids to you this evening, and with that, I will let Scott and Paul go through the detail of the rebid on these two trades.
Thank you, Ms. Abbey. Again, keeping with the theme, I'd like to thank Mr. Steve Banchero and the team from McCarthy Smith, putting this together again and going through the process of rebidding. You know, a lot of times, the rebidding happens despite of no fault of their own of trying to attract qualified bidders, and sometimes people get work right when you least expect it, and the bid you were hoping to get doesn't happen, and I think that happened in a few, in a few cases the first time around. So, I thank them for all their work. So, today, we've got just the two categories that are in addition to the earlier awards. They're for roofing and metal studs and drywall. The total recommendation, this is tab C, point one, this recommendation would be about $258,000 in addition to last recommendation, and that's hard cost plus construction contingency, and some slight adjustments in the, in the fee, which is calculated based on a percent. This brings the total revised award to just under 9.8 million for the elementaries, with the painting category at Randolph the only one outstanding, and that's about $100,000 placeholder we have on that right now. Tab two, you know, we're showing about $1,007,000 over budget, if you add the $100,000, we're about 1.83. The two contractors that we're recommending here for roofing, I'll go over them just because there's only a couple, but one is Esco Roofing and Sheet Metal. They have the roofing work at the three elementary schools. And then the second one would be Anover Ceiling and Pertition for the metal studs and drywall work for all three schools. I guess it's worth noting here, this is actually the second bidder. They were $165 higher than the first bidder. We are comfortable recommending them here, given the workload that the low bidder has, DTS. They've already been awarded a fair amount of work for the elementary schools, and based on McCarthy Smith and our experience with the Anover Ceiling and Pertition, this is a big company that can handle this work. We were a little concerned, and for $165, we felt comfortable with the difference recommending it for you tonight. Again, similar format, part four is the, shows us that just under 9.8 million, and then part five is just a two-page bid tab showing the, showing the bidders. We had two roofers and four drywall, metal studs, drywall bidders here. That would be, that would be it for those two, for the rebids.
Questions?
Don't know either.
Okay. Seeing no questions, we'll put this on for regular agenda. All right, then we'll have the, we'll have to call it the X item.
I just have one follow-up. When do you expect to have the painting bids back and the information regarding Randolph?
So we have the, it's been competitive, but already, already, we're just really trying to make sure that the way that we specified priming and prepping the walls is the best way to do it. So we're still working with the paint rep and with the contractor and the architect to vet all that out. We're very close, but we weren't quite there, so we wanted to hold off. But I would expect we bring it in March.
Okay. I know what the problem is and why we're taking our time, and I appreciate that, just wanted to tell the timeline.
Yeah, luckily with painting, there's no real long lead time items, right?
Right.
Everything's readily available, so we have the time to do our due diligence.
Okay, good.
Mr. President.
Can you remind me again, what was the issue at Randolph?
Really, the top layer of paint that's there is not adhering to the paint that's underneath it very well.
Got it.
Which means somehow, one way or another, we have to take that top layer off, you know, whether it's a solvent, whether it's manually doing it, or some other kind of primer that might be able to bond a little bit better, we're just investigating all those different options, so.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, regular agenda. To environmental consultants for Stevenson.
Again, as, as you know, for each of our projects throughout the bond process and all of our construction, whether it's bond or sinking fund, part of our responsibility is to make sure we take care of all the environmental issues in the building. We have, throughout the process, hired an environmental consultant for each of those projects, so their, the consultant's responsibility is the overall arching responsibility, make sure that, number one, they help us with the recommendation for the contractors, so they help us put together the specs and evaluate the potential contractors, as well as the oversight, which is extremely important during a construction project. So, as you know, we did bring you already for the elementary schools for this summer, as well as for the middle school buildings for the summer, the professional consultants, and so this is our final recommendation for this summer. Of course, Stevenson is over a two-year process, just like all three high schools will be. So, again, this is the recommended environmental consultant to oversee the environmental contracting work in Stevenson this summer. So, we have those bid results for you.
So, similar layout again. D1 is our recommendation letter for Arch Environmental, that's the same firm we recommended for Johnson and Holmes, basically for convenience, if you will. Changing firms there a little bit from what we had done the first summer. Their fee that we put together is right around $40,000 is what we're planning on. As we've mentioned before, we have a budget number from them, but their fees are really based on hours, and the hours are based on how long it takes the abatement contractors to do their work. So, they get done a little bit faster, then we save a little bit of cost, and that goes back into the contingency pot. If it takes a little bit longer, we'll adjust it up. So we do have a little bit of wiggle room in that fee number compared to what their proposal was, but we're recommending a purchase order for $40,000 for them. D2 just kind of lays that out, the budget, budget comes out of the professional fee budget, which is basically the same $40,000. And then D3 is a letter from Arch Environmental, kind of outlining their costs. So their costs include doing all the initial survey work up front, putting the bid packages together, meeting with the architects and construction managers to coordinate all the work as far as who's demolishing what, bidding it out, and then awarding it, and then obviously monitoring everything this summer, so. It's a pretty comprehensive package, and hopefully things will go nice and smooth for us, so.
Questions? Paul, is this for, for two years, or is this just the one year?
It's for both.
It's for both years?
Yep.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll put this on the regular agenda as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Abbey, then the next item is bid result for McKinley demolition.
Yes, thank you very much. As we have been talking about for several months, we are recommending that in order to save resources and to provide some green space over at the very landlocked Franklin High School campus site, that we actually demolish the McKinley building. As you know, of course, the programs that, that were in McKinley were moved to other places this year, and as McKinley sits right now, it is vacant, and again, we do expect to provide some savings to the district. If we leave a vacant building, as you know, no matter what, you do have to maintain some low level of heat, and you do need to keep water running at some level in the building. And while those aren't large costs, I think the bigger cost is potential vandalism costs, you still have to maintain it. If windows are broken, you know, the option is either to replace the window or to board it up, which is certainly a very unsightly look in a neighborhood. You know, we've had that experience in the past and found that a very, very difficult process to try to, to maintain a vacant building, and frankly, it just doesn't look good in the neighborhood as well. So, we've had that discussion, of course, and the board has agreed to send us out for bids for demolition of McKinley, which we are bringing back to you. We've had opportunity to continue to work with the Franklin staff in how we're going to configure, how that space will look after we've demolished the building that's not completely set in stone yet. We are working on some of the community issues as well. As you recall, we had an opportunity, Andrea Oquist, at that time interim superintendent, our superintendent, and Harry Lau, our administrator of operations, to go out and meet with community members and get their input on some ideas. Certainly one of those, people like the idea of having green space there, they also talked about parking, so we're trying to work in that. All of the decisions regarding that are not made, and we'll come back to the Board of Education as we move forward. So what we're talking about tonight is just really getting the building down and getting it prepared to, to update the site. So, with that, we do have the bid in front of you. You can see that we had good participation from vendors on the demolition, and we are recommending the low bidder, International Construction, at $239,900. International Construction is a firm that we've used in the past. They were actually the firm that we had picked to do Washington, they did a very good job. They also were the ones that picked up at Nankin Mills when we had some issues there and had to replace the contractor that we had, so they agreed to come in. They were the second low bidder anyways, but they agreed to come in and finish that project. And so while they had other things going on, and it took a little longer than we wanted, they did a good job, and they did come in and fill, finish that project for us. So we do recommend the low bidder, that we think they'll do a good job. The weather stays the way it is, if this, with your approval, this project will move quickly. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Mrs. McDonald.
Ms. Abbey, now the, what happens with the abatement on the building?
That's part of their process.
It is part of the process.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's included in their fee.
Yes.
All right.
Abatement is part of the process and included in their fees.
Awesome. Thank you.
That, that is a big part of their process, thank you for asking.
Other questions? Ms. Abbey, you said that it shouldn't take long. What's the projected start date?
I can put together a timeline for you, but I'm sure they'll be ready to get started right away. This is an unusual winter, so if the ground doesn't freeze, they'll get started right away, and they'll start with the abatement first, so. And they've already, as you may know, part of the process as you may know, part of the process of putting the specs together is to get in there and see what's going on. So that part has already taken place. We've already had contractors in there to take a look at what is and what needs to be done, so that's how they put the specs together for that. I would imagine they'll get started right away.
I think you may recall, Mr. Lau had indicated, or had indicated to you, that he was hoping to begin in February and be able to get the bulk of this work done during the cold winter weather.
Any questions? Seeing none, this will go on as well, regular agenda.
And if I didn't say it, that is a sinking fund project. Thank you.
And that'll take us to Item Three, up, bid results for PlayScape, Rosedale, and Garfield. Great Start Readiness Program.
Thank you. Again, we are pleased to bring forward the bid results for PlayScape's at both Rosedale and Garfield. These were two of our programs that moved from McKinley out to our elementary schools. Very pleased to have them in our elementary schools. And as we looked towards what we have for play equipment at those two schools, while we certainly have a lot, the schools did look into the grant, determined that they had some resources available for play structure equipment, and would like to have that, those specific play structures available for their students, the Great Start Readiness students. So, we are pleased to bring this forward to you. We have put this out for bid, and we are recommending the Low bidder, Play Environments Inc., for a total for the two structures of $32,198. This will be a Great Start Readiness Program grant expenditure. When we talked about this at our study session, I mentioned that it might be a little bit of grant, maybe sinking fund, but really, with this year's grant, we feel like there are sufficient resources to put these play structures in. I don't expect anything to change, but if it does, I would certainly bring that to the Board of Education. But we have gone through that grant and feel like this is both an appropriate expenditure and that the resources are available this year.
Great, thanks, Ms. Abbey. Questions? Is, are these play structures similar to what we did at Cleveland?
There won't be as many. Cleveland was bigger. We had more.
In a smaller scale.
Yeah, much smaller scale. So this is really one play structure, one smaller play structure.
There are no other questions? This will be on for regular as well.
So just to recap, I know Ms. Abbey has already made this clear, but all of the purchases this evening that have been covered are covered through bond fund, sinking fund, or the GSRP grant fund. None of the recommendations made thus far, nor the final remaining, are coming from general fund. So these are all part of the long-term plan, either through the bond, the long-term facility plan, or as part of our normal materials purchases, et cetera, to enhance our GSRP program. So, none of the expenditures that you've considered this evening, or will be before you for approval on the eighth, are coming from the general fund.
Mrs. Oquist, just, I know it's for us to say they're not coming from operations, but I think the opposite needs to be stated as well, is that those funds are not available to be put into the operation. So I don't know if you want to make sure that that's covered as well.
Sure.
We're not only not taking from operations, but these dollars are not available to go into operations.
Certainly, we have, as you know, very clear guidelines on bond funds, separate from that, our sinking fund expenditures, and separate from that, any grant funds. We're talking specifically about GSRP, but as you know, we have things such as PUP grant funds and other grants in our district. We have very, very stringent guidelines, either from the state or from the federal government, based on those funds. We adhere to them very, very closely. And as our voters vote on things like the bond, or the sinking fund, or renewal millage, et cetera, whatever those funds are, we have very prescribed areas in which we can focus. For not, none of those areas are we able to cover general day-to-day operating procedures as we can out of the general fund.
Thank you. And I know the GSRP staff is very excited to see some equipment out there, so.
They are.
Again, with the weather, hopefully we'll be able to get moving on that as well. As you know, Cleveland, we got Cleveland done, so.
And they were very happy.
They are very happy.
All right, well, thank you, Mrs. Abbey.
Thank you very much.
Your excuse.
Thank you.
That takes us to Item Three, G recommendation to purchase computer lab tables, 2013 bond. And if I talk real slow, Mrs. Alice can come up.
And Mr. Clem.
And Mr. Clem.
On his way up to him.
The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Good evening, everyone. Yes, we are bringing to the board this evening a recommendation to purchase 250 computer lab tables. In December, our Board of Education approved a change order that allowed us to purchase additional desktops computers. That allowed us then to convert the mini labs in our K4 schools and Webster to full-size computer labs. And we needed the additional computer labs to accommodate the additional online testing that our students are experiencing starting last school year. Along with the additional computers, we need additional computer lab tables on which to place these computers. So you'll see in your packet this evening, a recommendation to purchase 250 computer lab tables from Troxel in the amount of $77,005. These tables will allow us to accommodate two computers on each table. The table's surface has a punch-out, so that the cords from the computer will run through the surface of the table onto a tray or a storage area beneath the surface of the table. And that brings us to the next recommendation, which is to purchase 250, what we call power management plug strips, which will then be installed on the tray underneath the computer lab table, then therefore allowing the plugs from the computer then to plug into the power strip. Okay? So, both of those recommendations, to fund both of those projects, is $86,005. The other quote that you have in your packet, which is the, on the next page then, is a recommendation that we are bringing to you that would allow Troxel to pick up the tables from our warehouse, deliver them to the schools, unpack them, assemble the tables, install the power strip, and then place them in the computer lab. And then the computers would be brought in and installed on top of those tables, and then plugged into the power strips. Funds for the, all, sorry, funds for the installation and setup is $8,750. Troxel is using RMC bids, therefore, we do not need to bring to you any other bids, as well as the funding for both of these purchases are within the 2013 bond, specifically technology portion of the bond. And at this time, if you have any questions, we would be very happy to respond to them.
Mr. Clem? I don't see any.
Okay, so regular agenda.
Regular agenda.
Next Monday. Thank you so very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Alice. Thank you, Mr. Clem.
This will be of significant benefit to our K4 schools. As you know, as we've increased the online testing, one lab last year was very, very challenging to get all of the students through for all of the testing, and then the makeup testing. Having the ability to have two labs in our schools, you know, our five, six schools have three labs, so our K4 had one. And we were able to identify rooms in each of the schools as we've gone through the phasing of the construction, to be able to utilize, be utilized for this purpose. This will allow us to be, on a schedule that will not only allow our testing to continue without interruption, but it will allow larger blocks of time for classroom teachers to continue to use the labs for classroom instruction as well. Last year, those labs were shut down for a very extended, almost two-month period of time. So, this will be very, very helpful. Yes.
Mrs. Oquist, is this, I know you said elementary school. Is it lower L or lower L and upper L?
Just the K4. They're the only schools with just one lab. They had a lab, and then they had, in many cases, a mini lab, so a bank of 12 or so computers in the library. That isn't conducive to the testing atmosphere. So our, our upper elementary schools have additional labs already in place. So, it's just the K4 schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Johnson, this is just going to be one item? This, both of these?
Yes, the entire bid is one item.
Okay.
And President Burton, that concludes building site.
All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item Four, Finance Committee. And I'm going to turn that over to Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Burton. We only have one item to address tonight on the Finance Committee, and that is the discussion on 105(c) and limited schools of choice. Mrs. Oquist.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. At our study session last week, we were able to begin the conversation for continuing our limited schools of choice program in Livonia Public Schools for the 2016-17 school year. So if you don't mind, for our benefit, but also the benefit of the public, I'd like to share just a little bit of background about where we've been with this program. As you know, school districts in Michigan have the option of extending their enrollment to students outside of the school district under two provisions, either Section 105 of the Pupil Accounting Manual, or Section 105(c). For the past number of years, we have participated in 105(c), which is accepting students from within Wayne County and our contiguous ISDs of Macomb, Monroe, Oakland, and Washtenaw. We've continued this program over the years, but primarily initially used it for students participating in the Webster ACAP program, as seats allowed in the Webster MayCAP program, and in the International Baccalaureate Program at Franklin. Then, we were also able to utilize the 105(c) provision to allow students from outside of the district to enter our dual immersion Japanese elementary school, Nijiro. So those are four specialty programs in which we have had students for a number of years in our district under 105(c). Two years ago, the district first opened a limited number of seats, 50 seats, K through six, to students, again, in the contiguous ISDs, under a limited schools of choice program. We received a very, very positive response to that from the extended community around us, and we had a great deal of interest. Indeed, we needed to conduct unofficial lottery for four out of those, I believe, four out of those six grade levels. Last year, that program was extended slightly, and we increased the number of students in the 14-15 school year to allow for up to 100 seats through limited schools of choice. Last year, we extended those openings only in grades K through four. And as we talked a little bit about that last week, we talked about some of the challenges with regard to constricting those applications to just a smaller number of grade levels with the primary number just at one or two grade levels. What we found was, even though we had more openings, we were not able to fill as many of those seats because we had families that either communicated to us that they had students in multiple grade levels that went beyond fourth, and they were looking to bring their entire family, if at all possible. We also, because we had so many, so very limited seats, in some cases, parents were concerned that they would not be able to get in and made other options and choices. So we did a very thorough review of the past two years, the students who have applied, the grade levels at which they applied, the number of students who have remained part of Livonia Public Schools, and had brought forward to the Board of Education relatively similar number in enrollment for next year. But we've, what we've done is we've taken a look to go back to expanding those options of grades, back to a little larger option. Again, what we found in feedback from parents, including parents who are currently in our district with perhaps one of their children or more in either one of our magnet programs or in one of our general programs under 105(c), is that they were hoping for some additional opportunities for siblings or for some of their other children to be able to extend back into the upper elementary and middle school on a, from our perspective, on a very limited basis. So what we brought to you last week was a consideration that we would have approximately the same number of spots. We're recommending 125 spots open for next year, with 15 at kindergarten, 15 at each grade level, one through six, and 10 spots at grade seven and eight. So let me just refresh what that means. When we talk about 10 spots at a particular grade level, if we have three middle schools that house seventh grade, we are talking about 10 students across those three schools at that grade. So again, it's not by school, by grade. It's a total number of students that would be assigned out accordingly as there is space. Again, we're bringing to you options that are spread out across additional grade levels, but a lower number at a particular grade level, so that we feel confident we would need to not add any additional staffing. Obviously, the reason and the impetus behind bringing forward this recommendation to you is, is to continue to explore revenue enhancement options for our district. As you know, we are constrained considerably with our finances. And we also know that the Board of Education is very desirous of us continuing to look at ways to look at revenue enhancement before we take a look at budget reductions or other considerations such as that. So Option B that we are recommending has the possibility of bringing a total revenue enhancement of approximately $1 million if we realized all of those seats to be filled. Again, in all likelihood, I want to be clear, there's a very good likelihood we may not fill all of those spots. We may have 10 spots open at a grade level, and we may only fill five of those. We may have 15 spots at a grade level, and we may fill 12. If we don't fill at a particular grade level, we can't just take those extra spots and add them to another grade where there is more students. We have to have a lottery, and we can only max out at the number at which we publicly state we are opening seats. So again, we follow very prescribed guidelines from the state. We're very familiar with what those are because we've, again, we've done this for a number of years. But we would like to continue. We have found this to be a very, very successful opportunity for families and a very positive experience at our schools. Again, we've had the opportunity to do this in not only our magnet programs, but in our general programs at, at just, I believe, all, just about all of our schools through the elementary grades. And then again, at the MayCAP and the IB at the secondary grades. And one of the things we certainly find, as families are looking for outstanding educational options for their students, Livonia Public Schools is an option that they continue to seek out and continue to express interest in participating with the programs and the opportunities for their children here. As you know, those families must make a commitment to transporting their children every day to and from school. And we, once they are enrolled in our, part of our schools, they are part of our LPS family, and we look forward to having them for many, many years, all the way through graduation. And we had a very, very positive response, not only from our families, but from our staff as well, as we've had students enroll in the programs across all of those schools. So we would make a recommendation for the board to consider this. We bring this to you early in the year, outside of the realm of the remainder of our budget conversations, because again, we have a pretty good idea of when people are making these decisions. We would like to move forward with a timeline that would allow us to begin this enrollment period in March. And so in order to do that, we work backwards with the Board of Education, so you have an opportunity to consider this and then vote on this. We then apply to the state and give information to the county, and then we'll, again, update all of our materials, our application materials and processes. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'm sorry, Mr. Senator.
It's okay. Just to provide maybe a little more context.
Sure.
This is, in all likelihood, we don't know what our enrollment numbers will be next year.
Yes.
But if they follow trends that they have, that recent years have shown us.
Yes.
We're not going to be up 100 kids next year. We're still likely to be down several hundred.
Yes, we're just mitigating that loss.
Right. So, instead of losing $3 million from our budget, perhaps we'll only be losing two. So, I think, I just want to make that clear, that we're actually not growing. We're in fact, are still continuing to lose, lose students despite this. And that's part of why, you know, this is available to us and why it's, the board has thought it's really important in past years. thought it's really important in past years. So I, I want to share that. And I, this is part of a number of different budget enhancements that we have done this year. And could you just briefly remind us about what those were?
Sure, specific to the budget or specific to bringing in students?
To, to the.
To revenue enhancement?
Well, I think they're both, they're both good ideas, yeah.
Some examples like our cell tower or our property and things like that?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, certainly, as you know, included in this year's budget, we had some one-time expend, one-time revenue enhancement that are on our books. One example of that is the cell tower perpetual lease at Stevenson, which netted approximately $900,000. We also have two sales of property, both of the Washington location and Nankin Mills, which are included in this year's budget as part of our, of our revenue enhancement options. And then, in addition to that, we have, we also participated in schools of choice. So those are just some, some examples of where we look to enhance our budget through those opportunities. We also have, as you mentioned, enrollment. We also know this year, even though we were down a number of students, one of the things we were able to do was have a very aggressive marketing campaign, not only for our magnet programs, and as you know, we increased our enrollment at Nijiro by 50%. We were also able to garner, and I'll share this with the Board as part of our mid-year progress review next week, we were also able to garner some additional homeschool students as part of our marketing efforts, although we only are able to count just a small fraction of them when they are with us. We've able, been able to increase that number. We have also seen an increase in the number of private and parochial families registering. As you remember, Mr. Archibald and I made personal contact with, I believe, over 800 families last year who choose other educational options in our private and parochial programs. And we were able to garner, garner a number of students who have come to us directly from that initiative. And so those are just some examples, and we'll go into more detail next week, in ways that we've worked to cushion that loss a bit. So we are still on a trajectory for declining enrollment, based on the live birth rate that we have before us. We will have certainly much more detailed information as Plante, Maran, and Cressa completes their enrollment study for us. They're well on their way with that information. The district has provided them extensive background for, over the past seven years. And as you know, and we've shared with our community, we are in the process of that study. Each of these pieces will help us determine where we can stopgap some of those losses along the way.
Thank you. I, you know, I, it's good to hear all that again. I think there's, we need those reminders that your administration, your cabinet, has worked very hard in a really tough financial situation to try to be creative, instead of just cutting and slashing schools of choice, but all the hard work with parochial schools. The, like we said, cell towers, property sales, things that we would have, without that, we would probably have no budget, no budget leeway at all. We would probably be at a zero fund balance or close to. So, you know, I think there, there is a lot of hard work going on trying to, to get every penny we can in this district.
And I could go on and on. I probably could share with you about three solid pages of marketing efforts that were, that are underway this year.
Right.
That are continuing to expand. We've looked very deeply at our student mobility reports to discern if students are making other educational choices, how can we reach out to those families? We have, you know, schools that have modified open houses for parents, private and parochial and charter choice parents, to be able to get some of those folks in earlier. So again, as part of our mid-year progress review next week, we'll, I will share a lot of that with you. But we are relentless on our, on our work to garner as many students as possible because, as you know, we have very limited ability to impact the direct revenue that comes to us other than directly through our, our per pupil allowance.
Right.
So although we continue to advocate strongly on many levels, and I shared with you as recently as last Friday, meeting with our state representatives and state legislatures, which I am, you know, certainly doing regularly, and I know many of you are as well, we also have to work very hard on the things under our control. And so one of the things that we feel strongly about is, we have tremendous opportunities and points of pride in this district, and we know that we are a destination location for, for education in southeast Michigan and certainly across the state. And we continue to work very hard to get those, those efforts out in marketing, and we have some new and some additional creative options on top of many of the things we did last year, so.
Yeah, and I, I think.
And we've gone a little further than you, than you wanted.
No, no.
But it is very important that that's a, that's a huge focus, and I think our, my cabinet colleagues can attest, we talk about that, if not a daily basis, a very regular basis, so.
Yeah, and we, I think, as a, we get to see that a little bit.
Sure.
A little bit more than maybe other folks do, just because of our proximity to, to the cabinet.
Yeah.
But thank you very much for working hard on that. That is one of the most important things we can do for kids.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely. This allows us to save programs for the other 14,600 students we, you know, we work to meet the needs of each day. So if we can bring in an additional 100, 125 students to save programs for the students who are here, to support the staff that are here, and to support our community, then we certainly think this is a good option, and we would recommend it to the Board.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? President Burton?
Yes, I have a few, some of which we talked about in our study session.
Sure.
That was not televised, and some, you and, you and I have spoken about, Mrs. Oakley.
Sure.
So for the benefit of the public, I'd like to go over a few items and have you speak to them. Can you tell us how discipline situations have been affected in any way by our schools of choice students?
So one of the provisions, as you know, there are very limited guidelines that can be impacted by students applying. If students apply, they are generally able to become part of the district if they are part of the lottery and are selected. However, one of the provisions is, if a student has been expelled or has had a long-term suspension, those pieces can be considered prior to the acceptance of a student. We have had no students that have entered our district with those, with that background. Additionally, anecdotally, on a, on a regular basis through our schools, our principals have reported a strong level of support and involvement from families that have joined our school community, and we have had nothing that has risen on our radar to be concerned in that area, any, any, any more than the garden variety that we have with, with any of the students that are, are part of our school. So we've had a very positive experience.
Okay. How is our attendance, how is the attendance been with our schools of choice students? Because transportation is an issue.
Sure.
That, that is 100% the family's responsibility.
It is. The only piece that we've heard from a couple of our schools, again, I've not heard this widespread, is a concern in a couple of individual cases with families that had a little longer commute, and not so much with regard to attendance, but with regard to timeliness and tardiness. And so as that has happened, principals have worked directly with those families to express, as I will tell you, it is not unique to families that live a bit of a distance.
Yes.
Punctuality and attendance can be challenging for students across our district. But we have had a couple of instances where I know certainly principals have had to work directly with families as they're transporting students to be sure that they are arriving in a timely manner, so students can take full advantage of the day and of their instruction with students.
And as you said, as we, as we have had those same conversations with, with some folks who live within our school boundaries?
We do have those with folks that live right around the corner. So we, 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 we feel strongly that being at school the whole day and every day is very important, and that's not limited to any one group of, one group of our youngsters.
Okay. This is the first time that we're considering going into the middle school area with seventh and eighth graders. Can you tell us a little bit more about how that came to be a serious consideration?
Sure. A couple of things. That had actually come from some of our staff that had given us feedback and administration with regard to, as families have begun to apply and look at Livonia as an educational option for their students, one of the things we began to hear on a regular basis is, isn't there any way I could bring all three of my children? Isn't there any way I could bring their sibling who's now in fifth grade but going to be in sixth grade next year? And as you know, we have capacity to be able to take students in. We're also very cognizant that we want to do so on a very, very limited basis. Mr. Archibald has spoken directly with all three of our middle school principals to share with them this information, and certainly, we see this as, as, about as limited of option as, as you can. But we want, what we want to try to do is allow an opportunity for, first and foremost, I don't know if I mentioned this when I talked about the background, but if we have a family who have children in the district under 105(c), and they do have, for instance, a child who's currently a sixth grader, maybe at a private or parochial or at another district, and they would like to bring that, that seventh grader for school, along with their younger siblings who are already part of LPS, those students would have preference. If a family is already in attendance this year, this school year, a sibling would have first preference at any grade level. And we were able to fill a number of our spots last year with siblings of current 105(c) students. And so one of the things we heard not only from families but from staff is, boy, if there's any way we could expand those openings even on a very limited basis, it would allow families to be intact and all together here with us, which allows them to make an even greater commitment to, to the schools and to the community.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you tell us a little bit about the predominance of the communities where our schools of choice students are coming from?
Sure. So if we look at our whole, the whole kit and caboodle, so if we look at students coming from Nijiro, coming, coming from, into our A-CAP program, into our MayCAP, into our IB, the largest number of students are coming from Farmington Public Schools, Novi Public Schools, and combined to the two, the two, South Redford and Redford Union. And so our largest numbers are coming from areas not too far from us. We know that geographically, that, that is one piece of that. But whether or not they're coming for the Gifted and Talented Program, for Nijiro, or for one of our general education programs, we find that students that have come under the Gen Ed really have come across, I believe, 13 different districts. And so there's, there's pockets, maybe seven or eight students from one district, seven or eight students from another. But, but primarily, our largest numbers under 105(c) are coming from those, those areas.
Okay, all right. And then I wanted to make, make sure that, that the public understands, when we're talking about 10 students, we're not talking about 10 students, I mean, for example, say it's 10 students for seventh grade, we're not talking about 10 students per school for seventh grade.
Right.
We're talking about 10 students over our three schools.
Right.
So bringing, bringing in an average of, of three seventh graders to a given building and three eighth graders to a given building.
Yes, yes.
And the average size in those buildings, again, is how many, 100?
Would you say about 750 to 850?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yes.
It's, it's a pretty small number compared to the number of students that are in that, in that building. And that's very intentional. We've seen some of our surrounding communities just open the doors to an open schools of choice, and I want it really clear, the Board is clear, I want the public to be very clear that we are not talking about an open schools of choice, where it's just come one, come all. That is not at all what, what this Board is considering. It's a very controlled, very limited number of students.
It is. And I think because we've been able to move very slowly, very thoughtfully, and very methodically in this regard, we've been able to track those, those metrics that would give us feedback, that we feel is important. And we certainly feel very, very comfortable bringing this recommendation to you, and we would certainly concur that we are not looking at an option that would expand this to five, six, 700 students.
Correct. And as, as you pointed out, Mr. Senators, this is, this is one of, of many pieces that the Board is working on that will answer what some folks have been asking about, what are you doing to help the situation? It's, it's easy to say, I'm not going to do schools of choice, we're not going to do that, period. But we're finding ourselves in an increasingly tight financial situation, and we have very few options. This Board is not, let me rephrase that, I am not in favor of going to an open schools of choice. I haven't heard that from my fellow Board members. But as far as going to a very limited schools of choice, where we can keep good control on this, this is one of the ways that this Board is willing to step out carefully after a lot of study and do what we need to do in order to help our district. It's just one of many.
Thank you, President Burton. Does anyone else have questions or comments regarding limited school of choice? Mr. Johnson?
I have some questions. Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Oakley, when we look back at the 2014, 2015, we had 50 seats open, and 15 and 16, we had 100. Going forward, are those seats still open?
No, those seats don't carry over from year to year. Now, those students may, may choose to remain.
To go to the next grade level?
They can go all the way through 12th grade. The only way that they cannot continue through 12th grade is if they have a break in their educational enrollment. So if they chose to return to their home school, or, I'm sorry, to their, yes, to their home district, or to be educated in another manner, then that would be considered a break in enrollment, and they would have to reapply under schools of choice. Otherwise, these students, if they choose to do so, are able to remain with us.
Which leads to my next question. We had, for instance, in the 15-16, we had 61 students, 100 seats, so we filled about 60%.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Do we have any feeling, if, for instance, we go with 125, Option B, what level we may be able to expect in terms of a percentage of those seats?
Well, one of the things we took a look at was, in the first year, we had the opportunity for students to enter at seven different grade levels. So it was kindergarten through sixth grade. We had many more applications, and I believe that was because there were so many grade levels of opportunity for students to enter. When we put the bulk of those openings last year at kindergarten, and then again at first and second, if you didn't have a kindergartner or a first or second grader, you didn't apply. And so we limited that to only five grade levels last year, and at third and fourth grade, we only opened five seats. And so we, we had such a limited number that the proportionate number of applications was lower, even though the total number of seats available was higher. And so we certainly saw less students who were actually enrolled and attending. I, I would be reticent with only those two years of data to give you a clear projection. What I will tell you is, we are hoping to fill approximately 75% of those spots. We'd like that cushion to be able to, that, that Option B allows us to, to fill up to 125 if possible. But ideally, if we could get approximately 75% of that, we would be, we would feel very positively about that this year. We also know the market is beginning to be a bit more saturated with those options.
And we can always go for, as long as we have the seats available, we can always fill those. But if we, for instance, went to a lower number and we had a greater number of applicants, we'd, we'd still be stuck with the lower number. This gives us a cushion in case there are more than perhaps we anticipate. We'd have spots available for them.
That's correct. So they would have to apply within the 30-day window. Once that window is closed, you cannot accept additional applications until the first Monday of the third week in August. If there is, are still spots available from the grade levels you originally identified, you may go back to the, the list of students or open up additional seats at that point in time. Now, I will tell you, at that point in time, most folks have made their educational choices for the next year, but that is the other window of, of opportunity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? I have one. I don't know if you have this information at the top of your head, but can you share with us the, the historic impact over the past two years that we've had the, the limited school of choice program? The historical impact on our revenue?
We can. And so this year, I believe we were able to garner approximately $480,000 of revenue with regard to the number of seats that we had opened, and the prior year was approximately $400,000 in revenue. Now, again, Mrs. Jarvis, just to be clear, that is just from our general education seats. That does not include the additional students who attend either in A-CAP or in Nijiro or MayCAP.
So not the magnets?
Or an IB.
No, those are not the, or in the IB. So those are not under the magnet programs, because in some cases... because in some cases, we did have to grow staffing, for instance, at Nigirro, to accommodate those additional students. And so, while we still were able to increase enrollment, we also had to increase costs of materials and staffing, et cetera. The students that we were able to include in these seats, with the exception of last year because of the number of kindergarten students we took, we did add one kindergarten teacher over and above the initial staffing allocation to accommodate that. But then, we know we retained those students then from those grades on. So, for that one year, we had that additional cost, but with the other grades, we were able to accommodate those students within the existing staffing available, and in some cases, allowed us to maintain staffing where we may have had to make a reduction.
So, over the past two years, this program by itself has brought in almost $1 million?
Yes.
Very impressive.
Are you concurring with my?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
Just wanted to certainly check in with Mrs. Abbey that she concurred with that.
Any other questions or comments? That concludes.
One second. Along that line, are we looking at adding any teachers this year, or are these numbers geared toward fitting into this current staffing levels that we already have?
Right. These are the numbers that we believe we can comfortably fit in with the existing staffing that we have, which is why, again, we wanted to spread out across the grade levels and have not more than 15 at any one grade level. And again, when we're talking about 15 at a K4 level, we have 12 schools. So, at that point, at a grade level, you may be talking one student per grade level, per school. So, again, we're talking a very limited impact, but we are able to overall garner a significant revenue increase.
Okay.
And your recommendation is Option B?
It is.
Which gives us the most flexibility?
It does.
Given that all three of these are best-case scenarios?
Yes. Yes. I'd like to put this on the regular agenda for your consideration on February 8th, please.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
President Burton, that concludes the Financial Committee report.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Item 5, Policy Committee, and I will turn that over to Mrs. Bonnefield.
We have five items on policy tonight, and our first one is Board Policy GAA. And Mr. Archibald and Mrs. Terrell are going to assist.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. And before we get to Policy GAA, I would like to take the opportunity to provide an update regarding the Civil Rights Compliance Review that was held in the district on October 8. LPS was randomly selected for this review conducted by the Office of Career and Technical Education. MDE is required by law to implement a monitoring process to prevent, to identify, and to remedy discrimination on the basis of race, color, and national origin, gender, and disability by any local districts that are recipients of federal funds. So, in short, because this review was conducted by the Office for Career and Technical Education, it was a review of the policies, the procedures, and the accessibility related to our CTE programs and services provided by the district. Mr. Anderson, his secretary, Mrs. Greeland, and Dr. Terrell were instrumental in pulling together binders and binders of evidence for this review. Mr. Wintery, Mr. Law, and Mr. Roberts were also contributed to the data collection as well as participated in the review on October 8. So, I want to express our appreciation and thanks to them. The compliance review included a review of documented evidence as well as a visit to four sites in the district. That includes the Career Center, our central office, and each of our three high schools. So, if I said four, I would have meant five. So, that being said, a report was received from MDE in early December, in that they identified 33 findings, and of those 33 findings, 29 indicate that LPS was in compliance with regard to the particular aspect that was being reviewed. The four findings that require corrective action, one has been taken care of, was the filing of our assurances, and that is basically an assurance from the district that we are going, that we will comply with all state and federal non-discrimination legislation. And so, again, that was actually mailed off today to the U.S. Department of Education and to the Michigan Department of Education. We need to revise our notice of non-discrimination. If you know, in most, if not all, the written documentation the district puts out, there is a statement of non-discrimination included, and we need to update that to include some specific titles and contact information. We need to revise our grievance procedures, and that's with respect to folks who have filed a complaint of discrimination, so that they know that they can also appeal that complaint to the U.S. Department of Education and the Office of Civil Rights. And then, there are various architectural barriers that we need to remedy. Most of it has to do with our signage, so parking, van accessibility or handicap vehicle accessibility in our parking lots, to make sure that that is identified correctly, our entrances and so forth. I believe we had a shelf in the school store at Franklin which needed to be lowered, a sink at the Career Center that needs to be lowered, and we had an automatic door at Stevenson that wasn't working at the time of the review. By the time they left, it was working. So, again, we received the report in December. We met and put together our compliance plan and have submitted that, received the okay back to go ahead and start working on those items. We have until December of 2016 to be in compliance. Our plan has us set by September of next year, too, to be done with the form and implementation of the compliance plan. And I'll leave it at that. And included in this, there are a couple of policies related to non-discrimination that we needed to clean up, and so, I'll just turn it over to Dr. Terrell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Archibald. In regard to Board Policy GAA, there is one change. We will see that the Director of Human Resources has appointed the Civil Rights Coordinator regarding all complaints of discrimination, with the exception of handicap or disability, which falls under the Director of Student Services. So, for Board Policy GAA, it is just a title change from Assistant Superintendent for Personnel to Director of Human Resources.
I'd like to make note that we had a question at our study session with regard to expanding the areas against which a person may be discriminated. That is currently under review, and we, I know Mr. Wintery is meeting with our legal counsel tomorrow on a wide variety of topics, and that's one of them on which we're going to receive that feedback. So, what I'd like to do is recommend that we include the answer to that in your board packet on Thursday. If you're comfortable with the response that you have on that, whether or not it should be expanded or maintained as required by law, you can certainly give that direction back to me. If you'd like further discussion, we'll simply hold on this and vote on it at a later meeting. We are certainly well within, I believe we have until December to comply. So, we are well ahead of the game. So, I certainly want to let you know, we'll have that in your packet on Thursday. And again, if you'd like further discussion, we can bring that back to study session and then back through our regular process. So, once I share that with you in Thursday update, you can then just let me know if you'd like to proceed on Monday with moving forward with these changes. Again, very, very minor. We have these processes in place already, then, or we can continue on.
And again, not that it would matter, but we aren't even under a timeline with respect to these changes.
Okay.
Because these are simply title changes. These changes aren't the result of our review.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions on GAA? Do we want to go ahead and put this on? I'll make a note to go on the regular agenda.
We can, but what we'll do is, once I hear back from you after you've had an opportunity to review the response, then you can make a determination if you'd like to hold for further discussion. Okay?
And we can go ahead and do that, because this will be a first reading and then a second reading against the policy. So, we have an extra month.
So, we can just put it on as a first reading and discuss it if we need to.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Item B. Board Policy JAB is the non-discrimination on the basis of handicap, Section 504. And again, this is just a title change. So, instead of the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, it is the Director of Student Services who is responsible for the non-discrimination on the basis of handicap under Section 504.
Any questions? Okay. We'll put this one on as a first reading for next week.
Thank you.
Correct. Okay. Item C, JGI. JGI is Board Policy Regarding Students Suspected Abuse and Neglect, and we are providing you with updates to our Board Policy, in which we have consulted with our attorney, Gari Sashatell, in regard to all of the changes. There are a few minor changes that I would like to note, such as the name of the department responsible for handling cases of abuse and neglect, and then the updated contact information for reporting abuse and neglect, which you will notice throughout the document. So, two minor changes would take up a lot of the changes that you will see here in Board Policy. The majority of the changes you will see are in regard to adding language based on the Social Welfare Act that is consistent with law with respect to abuse, neglect, and exploitation of vulnerable adults. And we felt, because we run a program with young adults 18 to 26, we felt it was very appropriate to add this to Board Policy. Any questions? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. I have a question in reference to the second paragraph in the red on JGI, where it says, in reference to the employee responsibilities, and then the last sentence, it reads, the employee may also file a written report. Should we, is that something that maybe we should require, or?
In regard to the Social Welfare Act, it is not a requirement to fill out the report.
Okay.
As stated in the law, it is definitely something that we could require of our staff. In regard to suspected child abuse and neglect, we know that we must file DHS 3200 form.
Because it does, it says the employee may. So, should that be well done?
Just to clarify, so, this is, this section, this refers to the Social Welfare Act.
Oh, okay.
With regard to child abuse and neglect, it is still required.
It is still required.
And it is a will, and that 3200 form is the form that we've included in here.
Right. Right.
So, that is a mandated requirement.
Right.
So, not only the call to the agency, but also the follow-up within 72 hours, I believe, on the written report. With regard to the Social Welfare Act and the pieces that are with regard to the vulnerable adult, we must, an oral report must immediately be made. They may also follow up with a written report. So, that's based on state guidelines. If we wanted to make those more stringent, we could, but those are the requirements as delineated by law.
I believe if you, in the administrative procedure, and I tried to find it quickly, so I hope I'm in the right place, but under Item 4, I believe it, I guess it's completing the report. I'll read it more carefully.
So, it looks like we would need to add written if that was the case, if we wanted to make that mandated under 4.
Well, I guess my question is if we feel we have enough in place to ensure, but sometimes when you have something done, when it's fresh and happening then, and if you have it in writing, you have more concrete information to fall back on versus someone's memory of maybe not, you know, what happened a week ago. Sometimes, you lose, you know, just the fine intricacies of an event that may have happened. So, that was just my thought on that, but.
So, if we'd like to provide, we can look at it more thoroughly and provide some information for the pack on Thursday, is that?
Yes. So, we'll take a look back at those and make sure that we don't have, that we have that consistent throughout. Again, I know that we do have that under the suspected abuse or neglect.
Right.
And then, we can certainly also have some dialogue, whether or not that would be advisable to make that change from may to will.
If you can just let us know.
Absolutely.
So, you know, and that was the only thing that I thought might be something that we could look at.
Thank you.
Mrs. Oakley, I agree that it needs to be looked at, but I also want to caution that, you know, if we're following the law, and I just worry that we're, if we add, add, add to what our staff has to do. So, if we're putting in place, just keeping in mind that what the intent of the law is, and the necessity, and where, how much it's going to actually impact, and if it's going to wind up being more of nuisance reports, and please, don't get me wrong, that I don't think any of this is, I'm not under, understand that this is, you know where I'm going. I just, I hate to put in, you know, another rule, another rule, another rule, more paperwork, more paperwork, and eventually, people can't get their job done because there's so much reporting. And the state is mandating a lot of that. But, so, I think if we're going to look at adding that in, and it's not part of the current law, and we're going to go above and beyond what the law says, then we make sure that it's impactful and not going to become something that we're just simply writing report after report after report.
So, we'll certainly take that all into consideration, and then we'll get back with you on both of those pieces. Okay. Thank you.
So, we're going to put this, oh, I'm sorry, is there anybody else have any? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I'd just like to point out that this is a law that the state has provided that we're including, but it is based on recognizing child abuse or neglect wherever it may occur. It's not specifically at the schools or any of the school properties. So, if a teacher, for example, sees evidence that a child is being neglected at home, they're obligated to report it, and that's what this is dealing with.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'm going to put it on for first, oh.
Good. One question.
Yes, Mr. Senator.
Is this, are we bringing this in line with what is practiced in our building, or is this something we're going to have to reorient, orientate our staff to?
Dr. Terrell?
We will provide updated information for our staff on the Social Welfare Act. Currently, if we had a vulnerable adult who is being exploited, we would definitely report that to the 1-855 number, to the Department of Human Services. This would provide the professional development to all staff, including social workers and psychologists, who are our primary professional development individuals who provide that to staff.
Okay.
We will definitely be adding it, and Gari Sashatell has that right now.
And as you know, this is part, I shouldn't say, as you know, part of our annual training for staff, is that this is explicitly reviewed with all staff members. This isn't a read this and sign off on it. There is explicit training by our school social workers at every school within a designated timeline every fall.
Great.
That we review this, and so, anytime updates get made, not only will they receive this policy, but they'll also receive appropriate training on an annual basis.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you. Just one question in reference to the training. Non-mandated employees, do we put them, do they receive training on what to do if they see something that they have concerns with?
Yes, they do.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Now, we'll put it on for our first reading, and if we need to discuss or make any changes, that's the next one.
Absolutely.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate your time. Okay. Onward and upward. Okay, onward and upward. We're going to move on to Code of Ethics. Everybody flipped over there. Okay, so we've incorporated some of the changes. Oh, Mrs. Burton, I guess, do you want to lead this or?
You can lead it. I'll give a little bit of background. This is a document that the Board of Education took a great deal of effort along with their board operating procedures a few years ago to take a document that had gotten to be about 12 pages long and quite redundant, and quite a bit cumbersome, and boil it down. This is a document that we review each year. We don't, again, as Mrs. Oakley mentioned with the last item, we don't just read it and sign off on it, but we review it as a board of education, tweak things. It is a living document, and we make it useful to our board and make changes as necessary.
Okay, all right, here we go. I know we, we didn't have a whole lot of changes on the Code of Ethics. Is there anything on here that anyone wanted to discuss? It was mostly just word, a word here, there, a apostrophe here and there, a little cleanup work. Is there anybody, anything that anyone wanted specifically to bring up tonight regarding the Code of Ethics? We're all, Mrs. Burton?
If you might want to, for the benefit of the public, make note of the one change we are making in red on the back.
Okay, so under the board, this is specifically related to the Board President. And the change is, "I will advise persons addressing the board to do so in a respectful manner," is the update from, "I will ensure persons addressing the board to do so in a professional manner." We discussed that last week, and we are unable to require, so that was where we took ensure out, that persons address the board respectfully, but we can certainly advise them to do so and to present in a respectful manner. Did, I'm sorry, did you want to add anything to that?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. And that sort of is in line with the Open Meetings Act and the ability for community discussions. Okay, anything else? You guys good on that one? Mr. Sanders, I know you have to stop for a second. You good?
I'm good.
Okay, so then the Code of Ethics is?
So the, the Code of Ethics will go on?
Is a bylaw, so it will go on next week as a first reading.
Yes.
Because we do require that to be a first and second reading.
If I'm not mistaken, after the second reading is when the board is able to sign the document, and then you will have those placed at the appropriate spots in the, in the board office.
Yep.
Thank you, we'll be prepared to do that.
Thank you.
We are moving on to E, to Board Operating Procedures. I know there were a couple items that we needed to address in here, so I am going to open it up to anyone that would like to discuss any of the changes that we made.
Am I seeing correctly that 1.2, I'm sorry.
It is 1.2.
1.2 is the first proposed change we have? Okay.
Okay, so 1.2 is board member preparation for meetings, and there was an alternate B suggested.
So I received a recommendation for alternate wording for, I believe we are 1.2, Section A, subsection 2B. So Mrs. McDonald, did you want to share your feedback on the suggested wording change we've included here?
Sure, no, no problem. Well, let me first read what, how it reads now, so everybody, I mean, we know what it means, but the public doesn't. So anyway, this is, "Request to the Superintendent to provide documentation or reports shall be made by a majority of board members to the superintendent. Within two weeks, the superintendent shall respond by providing copies of the requested material to all board members or provide reports as directed by the board." And my recommended, or my idea for consideration by all of us reads, "Requesting documentation from the superintendent or staff shall be as follows. Board member emails request to the superintendent and all members of the board. Superintendent or their designee shall forward the requested documents to all board members for review in their packet, either through electronic means or via, or via a weekly board packet. Board members requesting documentation shall report to the rest of the board their findings or concerns, if any." And my, as the current board operating procedure is written, I feel like it stifles the hands of the board because it would take a majority of us to be in agreement to have an item requested by the superintendent or, and from the superintendent's staff. So if there was a question in reference to a contract or an invoice, it would take the majority of the board in order for a review of that document to actually take Usually at that point, you know, the invoice, invoices have been paid anyway beyond that, but then you, you've got an extended period of time that allows lapse in, in the review process. You know, I just think in light of transparency and our, our requirements, or I feel it's our requirement to review, be oversight for the school district and the finances, as the procedure is in place, it just ties our hands.
Does anybody want to talk about that?
Sure.
Mr. Sanders?
Yes. I, you know, I like the policy as was written because I think when we went through the process to determine the policy originally, the majority of the board at the time decided that we can, following with how we've been trained by Michigan Association with school boards, that one member of the board is not to request work from the superintendent or their staff. As a result, we've established this policy so that the board would act as one, and if someone has a concern, we can all talk about it and discuss it as a body, and then I'll get the information if we think it's prudent. I think following those guidelines, you know, what I've been trained is, is best practice and best, really the appropriate role of the board. I, I like the, the policy that, how it stands. You know, thank you, Mrs. McDonald. I know you must put some, some thought into this, and thank you for participating in this discussion. You know, that's my personal opinion, is I like the way the, the current one is structured because I think it most appropriately reflects our role.
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you, Mrs. Van Hooft. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I remember correctly, I think our intent, when we looked at this, revisited it and rewrote it as it was originally when we were going over this, was not to create additional work for our staff members or the superintendent. So if any of the seven of us could ask for copies or documentation or whatever, that might be a huge amount of work for staff or superintendent or so on. So I thought we kind of agreed that we would come together, discuss it if it warranted, and the majority felt that it warranted documentation and so on, then we would ask our employee to do that, or to take care of doing it for us. So I think we were going against what our intent was. Am I wrong?
I agree.
Sounds right to me.
Okay.
Thank you. My concern on this was the addition of the words "or staff" to request documentation from the superintendent or staff. As a board, we have one employee, that's the superintendent, and it's seemingly that we request work from her. She's our employee. However, the rest of the cabinet are not our employees, and it's not our place to tell them what work to do. We do that by going through the superintendent. So regardless of which of these, or indeed if, if we come up with something entirely different, I would strike the words "or staff."
Danielle, go ahead. I'm going to the end.
No, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson?
You know, I, I think Mr. Sanders has, has sort of hit on it. And, and I don't disagree with Mrs. McDonald that we have an obligation for oversight. The question is, how do we conduct that oversight? And as Mr. Sanders has indicated, we've always been taught that we stay in our swim lanes. And we are not to micromanage. And as Mrs. Jarvis pointed out, we have one employee, and that is the superintendent. And I think by getting into these areas, aside from the fact that I think this language sort of puts the cart before the horse, because it requests the documentation first, it's a little like what we're seeing in Congress now. Well, I never read it, so I don't know what's in it. We need to know why we want it before we, we ask for it. So I think this sort of puts the cart before the horse, but I think this takes us, the proposed language takes us out of that swim lane and allows us to, to micromanage where we shouldn't be micromanaging. So that's my feelings on it.
Mrs. Burton?
I believe we do have an important role, as you stated, Mrs. McDonald, of, of financial oversight. But that oversight is in aligning, in setting strategic goals for the district, long-term goals, and aligning the budget to those goals. That's where our responsibility is, at this table. Then we have to turn that budget over to the superintendent, and it's the responsibility of the superintendent and the staff to run the day-to-day operations of that budget. Accordingly, we hired an auditor, and we make sure that that entire budget on an annual basis is audited. This board has gone so far also is to say if there's a, is, there's a specific question on a given check or invoice, that we would ask our auditors to look at that exact specific check, not just count on the fact that they might have gotten, you know, have, have hit on that one. So rather than, well, I think it's important to, to note the difference between our financial oversight role. And that is, our role is in the budgeting process. The administration's role is in, in the day-to-day of, of checks, and this did come from, at least in part, from a request to see specific checks or specific invoices. I think the bigger principle here that we need to remember is that individually, we do not have authority. Whether you're the president, or vice president, or secretary, or trustee, none of us individually has authority. We only have authority when we come together in an open meeting, and the majority of the board sets direction. That's where we have authority. Otherwise, individually, we simply don't have it. To allow individual board members to take the authority to direct our staff could be, and we've seen it in districts around, we go to, to meetings around the state, we could have a situation that other districts find themselves in where they have the superintendent direct, being directed by seven individuals in seven different directions. That's chaos, and you'll quickly, those districts find themselves without a superintendent because this board is not a group of seven bosses for a superintendent. This board is a group of people that have got their charge to come together, to come to a consensus, and set a course for a superintendent. So I think it's really important that any documents that have a question on them, I think it is important, Mrs. McDonald, to bring those to the board, absolutely. Anytime anybody sees something that is, is questionable, it should be brought to the board. And the board decides as a whole if extra documentation is needed. What we also need to note is, right at the beginning, the sentence that didn't get read on air, but item number one is, I'm sorry, item, item A, rather, is, "Board members are always encouraged to ask questions of the superintendent and/or his or her designee, and have their questions answered." So that needs to not be forgotten. That is, that is our right and our responsibility every day. What we're talking about here is documentation that is requested that is above and beyond what's normally given to a board of education. And if we want that, if we need that, if the majority wants that, that's fine, but the key is that we are a group that has got to perform as a team. We aren't seven individuals. We don't individually have that right. Let's see here. Yeah, I think I'm just, I'm just going to stop there. I'm not opposed for a moment of, of requesting documentation for our administration, but it just, it needs to follow the procedure that we set forth, which is, we bring it to a meeting, we decide on it together as a group, and we give group direction to our superintendent like we do with anything else. It's, it's important to note that we're, that questions are always welcome, that documentation, if needed, is fine, but we have to perform as a team. We have to perform as a board like we do anything else.
I guess what came to mind tonight when we're talking about this and the way that this is worded is, and I think a lot of it's been covered, is, one, the proposed language allows for board members to act independently, which is not part of our job. We work as a team. We aren't, in no, in no way does the current language restrict us from asking any questions, from getting any answers, and from getting them on a timely basis. And I mentioned this last week, is that if there was some reason why a majority of the board, or any board members, were not getting appropriate answers or timely information, that we'd be talking about that. And that would be a matter of discussion. And if anybody here is secretly hiding the fact that they're not getting the answers that they need, then, you know, because of this or any other reason, you know, that needs to be brought to the table. But from what I've experienced and from, I guess what I haven't heard from board members is that we're not being, not, we're always permitted to ask the questions, and we're getting our answers on a timely basis in order to, to make the votes that we need to vote. I feel like the new wording is allowing one board member, again, to direct the work of either the superintendent or the staff, which, again, is not in our swim lane. And I guess, my question is, is what's not working about what we're doing right now? I mean, we, we just got done directing the staff to do a bunch of work by asking on the last two of the three changes that we made on the, I lost my word, on policies. We, we just got done asking the administration to do work, we've directed them to do work because we had questions. They're going to go back and do that work. And we asked that to do that as a team. Now, would I be happy if I found out, I don't know, I'm not even going to use an example. I just, we need to work as a team, and I, I don't think, I think we're taking a step backwards by putting wording into our documents that allows one individual to basically have a free-for-all with staff. free-for-all with staff. I just, I'm not, I just, I don't see a situation where we need to direct work, direct additional work to the staff, without the knowledge of the entire school board. And at what point, if there's an emergency, we call, Mrs. Burton?
Emergency meeting.
We call, and how many times have we called meetings when we're supposed to be off? Right? We've called meetings during the week, we've called meetings on Mondays that we're supposed to be off. We come, we all show up, it's not like three or four people show up. If there's an emergency where we need to get some documentation, there's something that's happening that we can't wait to discuss it at a board meeting with the full staff, there are other options to go. But to let one, one of us run renegade, and just start demanding things from the staff without the knowledge, and it's going, I feel like there's, the intent makes me feel like there's some kind of a witch hunt or a sneak attack, that all of a sudden, I'm going to get a document in my folder, and I'm not going to know what to do with it. Mrs. Laura pointed that out last week. How can we get a document and be able to do anything with it if we have not had any, you know, discussion ahead of time about why we need that document, and what we're looking at? Does anybody else have any comments on this? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I think the bottom line is, as President Burton said, we are not allowed to act as individuals. Bottom line, we need to act as a team. It takes a majority. These guidelines are already set, they're not set by us. And we have to follow what has been prescribed as how a school board functions. This doesn't go within those guidelines. Bottom line.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Burton, this is a consensus item?
It is.
So I need, right now, if we can come to a consensus, if everybody's ready to come to a consensus, we can decide which, what wording we're going to have in the document?
Mm-hmm.
Is that good?
Yep.
I don't know, I don't, we, how do we?
Because you already have consensus, right?
Yeah, it's, I'm comfortable with option B. And, I mean, with the original, original current option B.
With the current wording.
So.
Current wording? Current wording? No?
No, not for me.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Current wording.
Current wording.
Okay. So the consensus of the board is that we're going to stay with the current wording?
Okay.
Okay. We'll go through.
Page 12.
Is it the next one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, looks like 2.1C5. We just had capitalization. Members may not reply all or forward to other board members if, so we changed that to A. So the wording is to other board members, a message that, it's new, pertains to business before the board. And what this is saying is that, basically, we can't have discussions on email, that the purpose of Open Meetings Act is that discussions take place at open meetings, and that simply having the discussion on a, in a written format is not acceptable, and that we should abide by those, by the Open Meetings Act. Does anybody else have a comment on that? No? Okay. Let's see. The next item is 2.4B. Individual board members cannot, we had speak, and we changed that to communicate for the board. And I think the purpose of changing the wording was that our intent is not specifically verbal communications, but that communications of any type are not, again, as we discussed earlier, we operate as a board, not as an individual. So individual board members cannot communicate for the board, or in any other official capacity outside of the boardroom. Are we, anybody have comments on that one? Anything? We're good? And then we're going to add a C. Individual members may not forward to any member of the community a communication that pertains to business before the board, because such information should be discussed in an open meeting. And that's a new section. Do we need anything on that? Okay. And I guess, just to say it out loud, I'm assuming if we don't have any discussion, that we're all having, it's, I have a consensus that we're making the current changes.
I do have, I'm sorry, Mrs. Banfield, I do have one question reference to that.
Yes.
Mrs. Okus, do you know if our law firm reviewed that?
I did not send any of this to our legal counsel.
Okay. I just, okay.
Do.
It's fine. I just didn't, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know. I don't know, you know, because any of our emails, of course, are FOIA-able, so I just didn't know.
Do we want?
I'd be happy to have that considered, if that's something the board would like us to do. I'd be certainly happy to send out that.
Under the circumstances, I think that, are we okay, are you guys okay with running that past the lawyer?
That's fine.
Absolutely.
I would rather be safe than sorry on that one.
I think it's, I think you're correct, that email could be FOIA-ed.
It can be FOIA-ed, so.
Right. But I think this is saying something different. This is saying that we won't voluntarily forward communications to others. That's different than FOIA. But it's, if we want to have our legal counsel take a look at it, that's fine with me.
Okay. So just to review, we're looking at page 13, 2.4.
Yep.
Item C.
New section, yes.
Correct.
Especially since it's a new section.
Okay. We're able to, so I will, I'm certainly would be able to get feedback on that before Thursday. I'll include that in your board packet.
Yep.
That'd be great.
That'd be fine.
Okay. Then we are on page 14, halfway down to page D. Other background information. Let's see. Most of these are, we added one, so, I guess, meet with individual members of the superintendent's cabinet to get an update on what is occurring in all areas of school district. These meetings should include the following key information from staff. And these, this is under board member responsibilities.
The biggest change that was made here was just to assign which cabinet member was supposed to take care of that, so it didn't get lost in the shuffle.
All right. And this is one review of essential elements of individual cabinet members' roles. Okay.
And as President Burton brought this to me and asked if I could help delineate which cabinet member, you know, to which cabinet member this would be appropriate, I suggested that the bottom six items, it seemed to me would be appropriate, that the superintendent would review with any new board member. And certainly, if there was additional information required from any cabinet member, we'd be happy to provide that. But it seems as part of that introduction, introductory meeting, we would be able, I would be able to help facilitate through those pieces most appropriately.
Yep.
And on eight, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Only because I was involved with this particular piece. Also, on eight, it seemed rather narrow to state purchasing policies.
Yes.
So it just seemed that finance processes and procedures would be a broader and more appropriate term, as our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Operations would review with a new board member. I believe it goes beyond purchasing policies. So it seemed like that was more inclusive of the day-to-day operations that a board member would want to know about.
All right. Since this is, has been added since last week, does anybody have anything, or we're all good with it? I think this is, pretty much follows what we're doing. Page 15, 3.4C. This has to do with board members' concerns about other board members' performance. And we changed the wording a little bit, was unclear. So now it says, "If still unsatisfied with the results, or if the concern relates to the board president, then the concern will be taken to the full board." I think in the past, it sort of said that the board president, we would report to the board president if we were happy about the board president.
That doesn't work.
Probably wasn't going to work all that effectively, so.
The board president would.
Yes, that would be true.
We're good.
All right, we're good. Anybody on that one? So, and then District Oversight, 4.1A. The superintendent, it just changed from the superintendent shall develop district vision to the superintendent shall ensure the development of. And that was just sort of a verbiage change. The superintendent doesn't directly write it under her supervision. We have teams of people who do that. Are you guys okay with that? Some grammatical, 4.4 was some grammatical, a little apostrophe, and goals and accomplishments. 4.8, we had another apostrophe. 5.2 at the bottom of page 16. Board operating procedures are reviewed and updated annually by the board. And we had said it was annually by the Board Policy Committee. We added the words led by the Board Policy Committee, because the Board Policy Committee does not do that in a vacuum. Okay. Good? Nobody's yelling? Okay. Again, 6.2 on page 17, a couple apostrophes. Is there anything else that needs to be discussed that we caught after we went home? That I didn't mention? Any more apostrophes? Anything? Okay. So, just to reiterate, the consensus is that we're going to go with all the changes other than, we're going to stay with the wording, the current wording of 2, 1.2 to B. Is, are we all, yes, ma'am?
And we were going to send the one for legal review.
Yes. And the one is going back to for legal review. Do we want to, I guess this is just consensus. So since we need, since we're, we can change this at any time. Do we want to go ahead and finalize this? We can finalize it tonight, right?
Yep.
Or do we want to wait for legal counsel? Or we can finalize it, and if it comes back that that one policy is not appropriate, then we can change it later?
I'm fine with that suggestion.
Changing, holding off?
No, I'm fine, I'm fine with what you just said, which is, since we've gone through the document and done all the heavy lifting on it tonight.
Take the consensus.
If we have consensus on it tonight, we will have reached consensus, but if we find that we need to make a change.
Okay.
We can do, after talking to our legal counsel, that we can do so.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Good? Okay. So we'll.
I'll have that information in your board packet.
To Mrs. Wozniak. We'll take all the red out, take up the strike-throughs for us. And then we will wait for, or we'll get the information from the lawyer, and then we will proceed as needed on the one item that we had questions on. Good? Okay.
And then, Mrs. Banfield, if I can just remind folks that we are going to put this on our website, and why don't we wait until we have confirmation from our attorney that we're fine on the last piece, and that it will go under the board tab.
Okay.
Along with policies. I mean, as a separate bullet point, not buried in policies, but that way it's out there for everybody.
Okay. Anybody else, anything? All right, then that concludes policies. We're good?
All righty. The next item on our agenda is item six, Curriculum Committee. Mrs. Laura?
Thank you, President Burton. There are no items on the agenda for the curriculum committee.
All righty. Item seven, Personnel. Mr. Centers?
I have nothing unless, Mr. Winery, do you have anything you'd like to share?
All right.
Back to you, Mrs. Burton.
Item eight, Legislative Committee. Mrs. McDonald?
I have nothing unless Mrs. Okus has anything.
No? Okay.
Before we conclude, I'd just like to review the items in which we will include a follow-up information in your board packet, just to be certain. We've, so I'd like to just review the items that I have notes. We had a question regarding the nondiscrimination policy, GAA, with regard to expanding the protected areas for nondiscrimination, and whether or not that was recommended. And so, again, we've requested that information, and are receiving information tomorrow back from council. We'll include that information on Thursday. And then I will request that if you would require that we hold on that information going forward on Monday for a first reading, that you contact me. I'll include all of that as a reminder in the board packet, number one. Number two, there was a question with regard to the board policy, GJI, suspected abuse and neglect, and whether or not it is advisable to state that a written report is required as it refers to the items under the Social Welfare Act, not to be confused with the child abuse and neglect requirements that do require written form.
Mrs. Okus, is it J, I think you said GJI, it's JGI?
JGI, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just so you have it written down wrong.
Never put those two letters next to one another.
Yeah.
Thank you, JGI.
Okay.
Whether or not it's advisable to require a written report, again, we will get guidance on that, and include that in your packet. If there is anyone who would request that that not move forward on Monday, you'll let me know, and I will advise the rest of the board that further discussion is requested. And then for our board operating procedures, I see three things. One, to request information of review from our legal counsel on page 13, 2.4C, and whether or not that would follow the law, provide the response in the board packet. Have Jill change the operating procedures as we've outlined here by consensus, and to plan on including those unless, again, our legal counsel would recommend differently. And we'll advise you of both of those in the packet. And then, once that determination has been made, and we receive the green light, we are to add these under the board tab, a separate tab for board operating procedures available on our website.
Sounds pretty cute.
Okay.
All righty. We have now come to the end of our agenda. Thank you so much. For those who have tuned in from home, we seem to have lost the rest of our audience that was here in attendance tonight.
With the exception of our cabinet, who diligently hang on there with us.
Anyway, if you're watching us from home, thank you for hanging on and watching the end of the meeting, and we wish you a nice evening. You can tune in next week for our regular or general voting meeting. Thank you. Good night.